Heck, yeah.
You guys ready to go?
Yes.
All right. It's seven o'clock, so we'll call this meeting of the Garfield Township Planning Commission to order. First order of business is to recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Steve or John, somebody gonna take a roll call?
Yes. Agostinelli?
Here.
McManus?
Here.
DeGood, is it? Absent, excused. Robertson?
Here.
Fudge?
Here.
Klein?
Here.
Racine?
Here.
First order of business is public comment. Michael back there, you got anything you want to comment on?
I have to go.
Okay, well, there's nobody else here from the public, so we'll close the first public comment. Next item is a review of our agenda. If anybody has any conflicts of interest, we should hear about that, and if not, we need a motion regarding the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Support.
Any further discussion on that? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries? Next up is a review of our minutes, draft minutes, from the April 12 Planning Commission meeting. Does anybody have any suggested modifications to those?
I make a motion, we approve the minutes as presented.
Support.
Any further discussion on that motion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries as well. Next up, it looks like, is correspondence. John, it looks like we got something from Mr. Ward, who spoke to us at a public comment at our last meeting. Any other correspondence?
Yes, on your table is a letter we received today from the Watershed Center, and I'll kind of touch on that later on your agenda.
Is there a plan for staff or someone on behalf of the township to reply to Mr. Ward and his, what he's expressing in his, in his letter to us?
I have forwarded it on to the supervisor, who's taking a look at that, and I've kind of deferred it to him, because there are some things that are kind of out of our realm in terms of the planning department, so these are some things that the supervisor and the zoning administrator are aware of already.
Okay. Well, and I assumed that somebody was aware, and it also struck me that much of this is probably not within the purview of the Planning Commission, but I would hate to have somebody come to the Planning Commission and express themselves, and then send us a follow-up, and be met with just absolute silence. So I'm hoping that somebody on behalf of the township would respond in some way, shape, or form of acknowledging receipt of this and...
Okay. Sure.
And whatever comes afterwards, so be it, but there ought to be a response. Next up, reports. Molly, any town board report this evening?
We did not have a town board meeting, but I did attend MTA, the Michigan Townships Association, meeting at the resort, and one of the study sessions that I attended was controlling solar power in your township, and it was strongly suggested that if you don't have some kind of an ordinance controlling solar quite detailed, distances from sideyards and all kinds of different things, that we should be looking at it, because the prices are going up on that. And as municipalities have to be, I think it's 30 percent, alternative energy by 25, those companies, those other companies are looking at solar, and they're looking all over Michigan, so we should pay attention to that. That's it.
Seems like we put something in the zoning ordinance, or we recommended that not too many years ago.
Yeah, we did. So we have two different types of systems. There's the type of solar panels that you might have on your house as an accessory to your home or something, or your business, and that's, that's pretty straightforward. That's a use by right in all the districts, but then there's the special use permit, and that would be for your typical commercial operations.
Okay.
And if you recall, one of the things I thought was very good, too, is that the Planning Commission was, wanted to make sure that there was some way to have these disassembled, should they become obsolete and no longer being used, that there don't become a liability for the property, so I think that was also included in there. But at this point, by those are in the books, we haven't had anybody coming in for any of the commercial-grade operations. Now, they are permitted in every district by a special use permit, but we feel pretty comfortable, that gives us some flexibility, plus some of the standards that were placed in there to ensure that they, they fit into the community.
Thanks.
Do you know, Molly, is the town board thinking that the township might want to do something more than, or different than what's already?
We haven't had a meeting. The town board hasn't had a meeting, and so we haven't discussed it. They did suggest funds, that maybe townships wanted to get into the business of holding funds, so that in 25 years or 30 years, those solar arrays could be dismantled, and, you know, there were a lot of suggestions, and there were a lot of people that were having trouble with it, so...
Okay. Well, thanks.
...chat about it, yeah.
Um, any Planning Commissioners those reports? Bob, anything for the ZBA?
No meeting.
Okay. Chris is usually our spokesperson for Parks and Rec, and he's absent this evening, I know. Did anybody else have any Parks and Rec Commission updates or reports for us?
There's a few, just kind of Parks things going on. We're gonna meet next week, but I can allude to some of the things going on. The board, at some point in the near future, at the last time, they presented the idea of working with like a 501(c)(3) as like a fiduciary for fundraising for part of the park, so there's a group of enthusiastic mountain bikers, and sort of parts of those areas, when we did the Commons Design Plan, there's like some of the trails are mountain bike specific, so that we have a mix of some different things, and the thought was, between that and more like the Copper Ridge Trailhead, to do like some targeted fundraising and kind of channel some of that energy from that group into that, so we're trying to work with someone from NIMBA, the Northern Michigan Mountain Biking Association, and they've done some campaign, fundraising campaigns before on different trails in the region, if they'd be willing to set up something. So we're trying to work out something to eventually present and have reviewed, but try to work with them to see what might actually work. And otherwise, like the mountain bike group is, they're doing some, like a Work Bee event out there, and then, there's one other Parks thing, I can't remember what it is. Oh, the, like, special events. They're looking at some kind of policy and fee and security deposit structure for doing special events at the parks. Park stewards have indicated that they've gotten more requests for things like this, so something to present to the board is like, what's feasible here, and how can we cover ourselves and allow something if desired, and make sure our bases are covered, so. A few things going on at Parks.
Sounds like it. Thanks, Steve. Joe, any report on the Joint Planning Commission?
Yeah, we had our quarterly meeting. We actually had a few items to deal with this time, which was kind of nice. Kitchen choreography, that business that's actually accessed, it's in the commons, but it's accessed off the vision. I wanted to take an existing accessory dwelling, or accessory building, kind of like a garage, and actually convert it into two rental units, long-term rental units, so I don't think, we had no problem with the design on that. The commons, we've reviewed the, the design update for the nature area. I think we approved, well, we necessarily approved, but the gardens came and wanted to put new, higher fence around their gardens to keep the deer out, so that seemed like a fair proposal, so we had no issue with that. And then, we got a real preliminary draft on the infrastructure plan, which was definitely preliminary, but it's a good start, and we're both, I think all the engineering firms are reviewing that stuff right now, so kind of had a pretty good agenda for that board.
Thank you, Joe. John or Steve, any kind of staff report this evening?
We got two items. I'll go first, and Steve will go on the second one. I don't know if I informed the Planning Commission, but I actually am a member of an airport zoning board, so you may have heard how the airport, the Cherry Capital Airport, has now created its own authority, and one of the things that they did is they established a zoning board, and in addition to members of the airport authority, there are myself, as the Planning Director for Garfield, the Planning Director for the City of Traverse City, Sean Winter, and also the Planning Director for East Bay, Claire Kerner. So we're representing the three agencies that are impacted by the airport or adjacent to the airport. That board meets on a quarterly basis, and one of the first things we did was establish a zoning ordinance for the airport property. That airport property is mostly owned by the airport itself and leased out, so the ordinance is not really, say, as robust as what the township has, because they have lease contracts, they can stipulate what goes in where, but it does have some standards in there. But one of the things, I was just at a meeting actually this afternoon, is the MDOT Aeronautics Division was there to present on, it's called airspace zoning ordinance, or airspace zoning, but it's really not so much about the air itself, that's regulated by the FAA, but the land around an airport. There are 23 airports within Michigan that have airspace zoning. This is one of the larger airports that currently does not. But what it does is have an impact on land use from the standpoint of what's around the airport, and in terms of a couple areas. One, for the areas that are kind of more farther out, and the approaches to the, to the airport are things that exceed a certain height, like towers and so forth, buildings, but when you get specifically to the airport, they have approach areas that are designated, and that has a potential to impact land use, including those areas within Garfield Township, particularly the runway that runs east and west. So the air, the one that kind of comes over Barlow and Premier Place and Boardman Lake and kind of up this direction, has a potential to impact the uses that are there from the density in terms of people, as well as buildings and so forth, building heights. So right now, this was just a presentation. That would be a whole process. It wouldn't involve the airport zoning board that I'm on. It would be a whole nother set of organization that would require a joint airport zoning board. It'd have to ultimately be initiated by both Lelandal County and Grand Traverse County to start that process, but it is something for us to be aware of, and I know it's, we have a portion of that already addressed in our zoning ordinance, but it's something we're just gonna be, we'll see how they proceed on it. I do know that the airport is, is being encouraged by the FAA to move in this direction, because it creates a safer situation, and because there is a lot of investment happening in the airport, there is a lot more activity. You know, additional airlines are now serving, and the summer, in the summertime, this is the third busiest airport in the state of Michigan after, you know, Detroit Metro and Gerald Ford Airport in Grand Rapids, so it's something that makes sense in the long run. We just have to continue to work with them, and I think it's been a very good opportunity to be working with the airport, because they do have a big presence in our community, and I thought it was been great that they opened up and included the representation from the local communities.
Good. Thanks.
And Steve?
And then, today I was at, in sort of all-day training kind of conference event with the ESRI Northern Michigan User Group, ESRI being GIS, so it was a GIS users from all over northern Michigan. A few people gave presentations on what they're working on, how they're using some of the different GIS tools out there, City Traverse City, Road Commission, had some people from different counties in the area, as far away as Alpena, I think, was there today, a few different private companies. So interesting to see what people are working on. I think some of the more relevant ones for us, the Road Commission, they're doing a lot of their own asset management, which was really interesting to see, including like one of every sign, like a point for every single sign, stop sign, speed limit sign, that they own, because those are their assets, but also, like, their management of roads, and they classify some of them as like local roads, and whenever those get repaired, there's sort of the system in place of, the Road Commission contributes some, the township, and then a special assessment district, so they're trying to manage, like, all right, here's everything we consider to be a local road, and try to share that with townships, so sort of like a joint asset management of the local road, so it'll ultimately be something I think the board deals with more, since they deal with the setting up of the special assessment districts and any funding that goes with that, but that is something they're working on. And then, some of the other users have been doing a lot with the different ESRI apps, like the one we have, our map that we've pulled up here before that's on our website. That particular app that's on there, that one's being retired by ESRI. There are others that are like similar, like any new software, like, like WordPerfect became Microsoft Word. It's gonna be something, we'll have something a little more sophisticated, a little bit different, but seeing the one today, I even was looking like, yeah, this looks a little bit cleaner, and a lot of those apps now are mobile-friendly. It's like if you pull some of the newer style ones up on your phone, they're a lot more structured to fit that space, which could be good for even in the near term, if we're doing community engagement, and we just say, scan this, take a look at this on your phone, which we can talk about later when we talk about community engagement strategies, so. But it was, all in all, interesting and good networking opportunity to see what people are doing in the area.
Great. Thank you, Steve.
Mm-hmm.
Well, next up on the agenda is unfinished business. I don't see anything under unfinished business. So I guess we move along to new business. First item, 7A, is Planning Department Report 2023-45. We're gonna talk about master plan update, the natural resources and parks and trails portion.
Yeah, so this is kind of starting into the draft master plan, and we're gonna start over these next few months going through different chapters, and the, the chapters themselves are gonna be pretty brief. A lot of the data and information that we've collected and reviewed over the last several months will be assigned into an appendix. We have kind of two different appendices that we're putting together. One is gonna be existing conditions, so that's gonna have a lot of data, whether it's census data, maps, descriptions about Garfield. The other part will be about community engagement, so we'll have the summary from the survey that was done last summer. All that information will be, there'll be some highlights in the actual document, but the, the document itself will be more focused on direction and implementation of goals and objectives. So the actual chapters themselves will be, have a brief intro, kind of like a paragraph intro, and then it'll basically outline some goals and objectives. If you, there'll be some summary information and data that will be provided in the document at the onset, but if you really want a lot more detail, you'll go back and look in that appendix. What that does is it, it's gonna streamline the master plan, getting down to those action items, like the goals and objectives, the zoning plan, the implementation strategies, those will all, that's really the core of what the plan is. A lot of times when you open up a master plan, you go through a lot of demographic data, tables, maps. There'll be maps in ours, but there'll be more pointed maps, but a lot of that information is really pretty static. It's not necessarily what really makes the plan kind of come to life, and really does add a lot of thickness to a plan, and if we're trying to provide something that's more direct, that people will actually reference a lot easier, is to make it a lot more simplified. So when we look at these, these chapters, they're primarily is gonna have three parts to it, a brief introduction, a goal, and then some objectives. So the intro is kind of encapsulating some of the existing conditions, or what the issue is. The goal should be that long-term goal, what's the general direction we want to go in, and then the objectives are supposed to be measured action items. Those are things that we can actually complete. So tonight, we've got two, essentially two chapters. One is the Natural Resources chapter, which covers natural environment, water quality, energy, and agricultural land, and then the next one is, that we'll talk after that, is the Parks and Trails chapter. So this one has a relationship to, the township does have a Parks and Rec master plan, that's really governing a lot of the parks, but this kind of is just to also tie it to the master plan through this particular chapter, so those, those, those two plans are actually tied through in this particular portion of the master plan. So what I'd like to do is, is kind of walk through these with you a little bit, and explain to kind of what the idea and thought process behind some of the, primarily the goals and objectives is what we're gonna be looking at, but I do also want to reference that letter that came from the Watershed Center, which I think is really helpful. We received that today from them, and they were suggesting including additional information on specific water features in, in Garfield, such as Mitchell Creek and so forth. That's the type of information that we'll have in that existing conditions report, because what we wanted to kind of keep, like I said, kind of keep this short and brief. So we do touch on some of those things in very, you know, in just kind of simple reference. When you look at the natural resources, there's, that introduction has, you know, really five short paragraphs there. It's just really kind of teeing up the, kind of giving you a sense of some of those prominent natural features, talking about the terrain in Garfield, talking about the presence of wetlands, which we have, energy, where we receive our energy from, and some of the challenges related to how do we balance between growth and development and maintaining some of our natural areas. We do have, to go with that, is these maps, and these are very draft, draft maps, but they're important illustrations on some of these things, and the purpose of the maps are to support, kind of the reason why we have some of these goals and objectives. So in the case of natural resources, we start off, in this particular one, we have actually four goals, and the first one is, is natural environment, and part of that is, is understanding, you know, what is it that we want to protect, you know, in our natural environment? Some of these maps will show that, for instance, like the wetlands map. We know we have a lot of wetlands, we run into a lot of projects where we have wetlands in our community, but this, the map is just basically showing them where they're located, and I think it's important to understand that a lot of those wetland areas tend to be also areas where we want to see development, or have seen development, and so there's always that balance of how to still protect them and allow for them to serve their function in terms of the natural environment, but at the same time allow development. So these maps tend to kind of tell the story in addition to some of the text.
The existing conditions report and some of the other stuff that you mentioned a few minutes ago would be in an appendix. That would all still be attached to the master plan. If somebody comes in and picks up a copy of the master plan, it may be a shorter text at the beginning, but all those things that you're referring to are part of the same document.
Yep. They give the basis for why we have the goals and objectives and the action and implementation strategies. Now, we could just provide them, you know, I can imagine a plan, I'm just guessing, maybe 50 pages, with the appendix, it's probably gonna be, you know, probably 250 or something like that, or 200. The point being is that they don't have to get into that, but it's there for their reference if they want to, and they can just kind of, the, the plan itself will be more directed.
Probably good that the, the longer detailed stuff is part and parcel of the smaller one, because you'd hate to have somebody think they've got the master plan, but they don't have all the appendices that are critically important, and they might go af, go off and make some mistakes because they didn't see and weren't aware of attachments.
Right. And that, that information is very important, because again, it gives us the basis of why we're doing what we're doing when it comes to the, to the master plan. It's the justification, it's that we went through the process, we engaged the community, we gathered the data, analysis, maps, and so forth, analyzed it, and, and developed these. Some of these things are, are not, are nothing new. I mean, these, I took a lot of the language that was in the current plan, so we're not necessarily recreating the wheel here. So I guess what might help is if maybe if I just kind of walk through these, but the first goal is, is a very simple, is promote the, promote natural environment protection in a planned and strategic manner. And then, so that's our, that's an ongoing goal, we'll never necessarily come to closure on that, that's something that we're, that's a direction that we want to go in as a community. And how do we achieve that? How do we move the needle on that goal is, are those objectives? Now, those are actually actions that we can take. The first one is make environmentally conscious decisions and review of development applications or zoning policy considerations. So that's something that the Planning Commission does on a regular basis. You get a site plan in, you see, okay, there's wetlands there, they have to go through, they have to do a delineation, there's setback requirements that have to be inserted in there. Same thing when you're amending the ordinance, and we've done that recently, we've altered some of that language regarding wetlands and some of the setbacks, so it's clear and for, and clear direction on that. So that's something that, that the Planning Commission does on a regular basis when we're going through irregular business. The second one is create an interconnected network of natural areas and protect environmental assets through parkland acquisition, or when feasible, acquire developments to set aside lands that provide usable open space. There's a couple of things there. Some of this may not necessarily directly pertain to the Planning Commission, like the parkland acquisition. That has been going, you know, it's certainly led by the township board, they received some recommendations on certain, some of those acquisitions from the Parks and Rec Commission, but the board has been going through and has acquired parkland over the last 20 years, has really developed into the park system, and actually, if you look on the non-motorized parks and trails map, which is this one, do you want to show that one, Steve?
They're not necessarily labeled, but most of those, all through the middle section
here are, for the most part, a combination of township parks. Some of those are county parklands, as well as the Commons Natural Area, kind of up to the top here in the Hickory Meadows and Hickory Hills up in those particular areas, but that's, that's kind of the, the parklands that are available within, whether they're owned by the township or other entities. So there's been an effort to not just acquire those properties, but also, one of the things, and we'll get into this a little bit more, is to connect those so that they have some relationship to each other, whether it's non-motorized connections like trails and so forth, or sometimes they can have greenway connections as well. The other part is, in that objective, that mentions set aside lands that provide usable open space. So that's been done through the township many times through the plan unit development process. I can, you know, there's, there's parkland that we have, for instance, like Miller Creek. When the arbors went in there, there was dedicated parkland as part of that, they were required to provide usable open space as a PUD requirement, that's been now part of that park and available for the community as a whole. The third objective is facilitate context-sensitive development and redevelopment through review process that support a healthy balance between the built and natural environment. So this is a, a process when you actually are reviewing the site plans, there, there's work that's done by you as a Planning Commission when you approve a project. Some of that, some of those projects go to the township board, so the township board is involved in those, like if it's a PUD. There's also other reviews that are done, for instance, the township engineer does stormwater re... For instance, the township engineer does stormwater reviews. So, that also impacts the environment and how those stormwater systems are laid out are important as well. So, there, we have a, a whole, uh, development process. There, there are ways that we can encourage, um, development so it lessens its impact on the environment. Uh, I was just thinking of the, uh, walk-in clinic, is it the Well Now?
Uh, yeah, the new one?
Yeah.
Yeah, Well Now.
Well Now, if you recall, they wanted to exceed their parking. Uh, so, the, uh, the only way that we would allow them to do that is if they did the brick pavers, which would allow some of that, uh, stormwater to actually filter rate directly into the ground. So, that was part of the provisions that are in the zoning ordinance. There are other things in the ordinance that does allow for some, uh, ways to, uh, kinda soften the, uh, the balance between the, the built environment and the natural environment. Uh, collaborate with environmental interests to improve the health of the environment. Uh, we do get, have, for instance, regular dialogue with the watershed center, some of these feedback that we get from them. Uh, there, there are other groups that, uh, are out there, the, the, um, conservation district and so forth. Having those groups on board, uh, as a matter of fact, they helped us with the next one, uh, require the incorporation of native plantings and required landscaping for commercial, multi-family industrial developments. That's in the zoning ordinance. So, some of this isn't necessarily new, but it's, 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 uh, validating, it, it's a, it's a little backwards. I mean, some of the stuff I didn't quite see in our ordinance before, some of it has been carried forward, but it's, it's justifying why we have that requirement in our ordinance. Um, you can't have invasive, you can't put invasive species, can't plant them into your, uh, landscaping plan. So, this is, this is kinda the pointed piece that says that, you know, we're, we're requiring that. The ordinance is the one that actually makes that requirement. Moving on is water quality. So, the goal here is make water system improvements and support environmental conservation efforts to protect water quality. That's kinda twofold. The, the township has a, uh, a municipal water system with a sanitary sewer system. So, that's, uh, the water system improvements, probably should be water and wastewater identified in there. But that does protect the water quality. It does also serve those areas where it, uh, has some challenges, that there are areas that are contaminated, that that water system does provide safe water. So, that does, um, ensure too that sanitary sewer system is operating and, and contains those types of, uh, uh, fluids so that they're properly treated, and then support environmental conservation efforts to protect water quality. So, those are things like the wetland setback. We also have, um, stream setback, which is a little bit different. Uh, we have a stormwater, um, ordinance in place. There are, uh, promote low-impact stormwater management design, including infiltration planners, rain gardens, bioswales, permeable pavement. That's in our ordinance right now. We, we encourage that. It's not necessarily required, but we encourage that, um, to be included in developments. I mentioned the stormwater ordinance. I think that's something that we, that needs to be updated. Uh, there's some newer technologies. We are getting a lot more interest in people doing, instead of retention basins, they're, they wanna do the underground, uh, stormwater management. So, that changes things a little bit, and it'd be helpful to ensure that we, uh, may have some other options available to them, um, in terms of that, uh, managing of stormwater Energy, um, energy isn't something maybe that we're directly related to. We, we aren't necess- the township itself isn't the provider, but we're users of energy. And we, we rely on, uh, reliable energy, uh, sources. And we also, it's important for us to support energy efficiency and conservation, um, doing things, uh, whether it's facilities like this building that we're in, or providing for regulations for solar panels in our community. So, we're taking those types of actions, uh, to, to, uh, support energy efficiency and conservation. There are a lot of, uh, we also include wind, uh, energy as well. Those regulations are already on the books in terms of the zoning ordinance. Emphasizing building reuse and flexibility of uses wherever feasible, whenever feasible. The Cherryland Center, you know, repurposing of that particular structure, that the township board supported a, a brownfield plan for the former Kmart, which is now the Curling Center, and, um, trying to get those areas reused as, as opposed to, uh, always kinda building new construction. And certainly, kind of a, a broader objective is just directing development towards areas with access to existing roads, pathways, water, sewer systems, infrastructure. We've kinda talked about that in, in the past, particularly if we want higher density, we wanna make sure that those are areas where we have water, sewer that can, uh, to, can accommodate that type of development. And then the last one is, uh, agricultural land. In that one, we actually have a couple, that was really helpful to see, um, the farmland soils in our township. So, the, there's the one that's kinda really mostly just green, just, that's just the farmland soil. So, there's a couple of classifications there. The, the, um, the darker greens are prime farmland. So, those are prime farmland is, is, not the super dark one, kind of the medium green, I should say. If you look on the key on the right side of that map, all areas are prime farmland. Then farmland of local importance. So, those are gonna be, um, those are gonna be areas primarily where there's probably topography and soil types that are probably more conducive, uh, to things like orchards, uh, that are unique to this area. So, those are kind of something that's, uh, unique to, specifically to kind of the Grand Traverse area. And then prime farmland are those areas that if those lands were drained, uh, that would be, uh, prime for farmland as well. So, this is all comes from the, the soil survey. This has just been extracted and presenting it here, um, at the township level. And then, what we've done is, uh, on the second one, is Steve did an existing land use inventory of the township, uh, which they discussed last year at the study session, I believe.
Yeah.
We had existing land use, and we showed it with water and sewer on one of them, I think. So, we overlaid what's in agriculture. Now, agriculture isn't necessarily crops. It could be grazing land for livestock, it could be orchards, it could be anything. And, and some of this is not exactly perfect, 'cause sometimes it just might be a fallow field that looks like it was, may have last been used for agricultural purposes, but it kinda gives us some sense so that when we talk about, um, maintaining agricultural character or preserving farmland in our, our master plan, we can actually point to, these are the areas that at least are, um, you know, more, more viable for, you know, those types of efforts, uh, versus like you, if you look where the mall is at, there isn't really any, you know, prime farmland there, and fortunately, they didn't pave over any farm land there. But it, it's, it does show those areas that we, if we wanna preserve, you know, it's usually the clustered areas that make a lot more sense, um, if we wanna, uh, just be cognizant of that through our zoning and any other efforts.
So, is there anybody at some point gonna be taking another look to make sure that what we're thinking is existing ag land really is, and that we're not failing to put some more stuff in there that should be?
So, we've done, most of this was all through, um, interpretation of aerial images. So, we'll probably do some spot checks on this. And if you get, if you have any information you wanna share with us or any thoughts on this, let us know as well. So, these are all draft maps. Uh, or if you know of anybody that we could, uh, confirm with, but, uh...
We can check with assessing records here. I think Amy's got a good, like, record of what's active farmland or not, uh, based on how it's assessed.
Some of you folks that have been longtime township residents and know a lot about farm stuff might be able to spot some of these things and figure out what should be there or shouldn't be there that, be sure you speak up at some point if you see stuff that's wrong or omissions or whatever.
John, what's the definition of farmland of local importance? 'Cause we, uh, there's a lot of that in existing subdivisions on your map here.
Yeah. Uh, so, those are based, just, uh, just the soil types. So, um, it's, it doesn't mean that it's necessarily farmed, it's just saying that the soil that those are, those locations are...
Okay.
Are probably really good for a garden, maybe, if that's, uh, prime farmland, prime soils for farmland.
Some of them were like orchards in the past.
Yeah.
That, more of like a local farming, like, uh, the local farming culture supports orch- orchards that don't necessarily work all over the place. But it's, it's part of like the local soil type and what, uh, what kind of agriculture works in this climate and environment.
I can get the, we'll provide the definitions for that, um, because I think that would be important.
Well, it makes more sense to me now that you're talking about the soils, you know, not just the terrain and all the other stuff.
Yeah, but the soils combined with topography are very important, 'cause that's, um, a soil survey breaks that all down and, um, is, so, I don't know much about the local importance on that one. I'll have to review in terms of the definition of it, but my guess is that topography probably has a lot to do with it in this particular area.
Where does that come, that comes back, I was told that in the fifties, they actually sent somebody around, um, I don't know what, what ag, uh, government agency did it, but they went around and actually mapped all, all the soil, and this is still from there, they've never updated it since then.
They have updated some of this. I don't know how they updated though, but I always remember going, when my first experience with the soil survey was a book. And it was a nice thick book, and you'd pull it up and it'd just be a ser- every county had, every county in Michigan had a soil survey. Most of those were done in the sixties, so it could've been done cumulative of, of, you know, data collected back in the fifties and sixties. Most of them were printed, uh, in the sixties, late sixties, and then, um, those were then replaced by a more digital format, and I think they've, they've done some update to them, but I'm not sure how they do that.
When I got this, I found both in our data, I found like, uh, either a farmland soil or an old soils layer, and then got an updated full soils layer from the county, and they indicated like all the categories and like to double-check it, but basically redo that. Uh, it looked pretty much exactly the same, so I don't know how often they went out and did a soil survey. It would've been, uh, US Geological Survey, uh, that I, I think provides that, but I don't know exactly how often they do the survey.
I was, an interesting thing I was told one time by, it was an old, a retired guy from the soil erosion. He had, in the past, worked for like the Farm Service Agency, so he was around there his whole life. But he said that back in the, when they did it, he says they were required to do a whole section a day, so, he says it's not that, it's not that accurate, 'cause they wanted to, they had to, six hundred and forty acres they had, and they wanted, their boss made him cover, was trying to cover a whole section a day, so, but I can see some of the whites, and you can s- it is, some of it's pretty close though, 'cause I know where the darks are, and that actually is pretty close to where there's some good heavy clay ground that, it goes good stuff, and...
Well, part of it, you know, now with technology, I mean, they do remote sensing a lot, so they'll look at, it's not just like the actual soil that they're sampling, but they'll look at plant life and plant types, and those are indicators. It's the same thing with wetlands. You know, when they go out to delineate a wetlands, they're looking at the plant life. That's why they can only do it in the, when plants are growing, 'cause they'll do it in those months, and those are often indicators of the soil types. They know certain types of, uh, plant materials growing and so. So, I know that's a part of that as well, and other data and information that's been gathered, I'm sure they're looking at.
Well, no. It's a common thing I always use is a, a good stand of hardwoods, good big trees, you know, normally mean, uh, good soil, and then a, a good big barn usually means that there's good soil there too, if you ever use that. Little shack barns, there's probably sandy soil. That's a pretty common, common thing to go by.
Yeah, I mean, you know, in, in Grand Traverse County as a whole, we don't have a lot of real prime farmland. I mean, if you, you gotta go down like to the southern part of the county where, get towards Buckley, then it starts to open up. But then if you go to the east side, like Union, I don't think there's, Union Township to the, on the east side of the county, I don't think there's hardly, and it's all sand. Uh, so, we have some, it's, it's not a lot, but, um, it, it certainly is provide, I think that the local importance is probably the, um, what was used to be called the unique. I know they used to use that terminal soil surveys, and that, um, is, in, in this particular area, is the climate and the topography conducive for, uh, fruit orchards and that type of thing.
It'd probably be important to make sure that the words used are well-thought-out, 'cause otherwise, somebody may ram these words down our throat and try to provide some unintended consequences to the meaning of the word. So, before we use them, we better make sure we're using words that are consciously thought through, what are the pros and cons of using those terms?
Well, these are not our terms. These are the soil survey terms. We just need, I think we need to provide the definition and reference...
Clarify what they mean.
Yeah, clarify and maybe explain a little bit, interpret those a little bit more. I mean, that, that might be helpful to also have here some, uh, interpretation on this.
Yeah, I mean, it'd just be a shame if somebody picks us up and tries to use it as a club to hit us over the head with, we're not doing something consistent with our own words. You hate to have your own words shoved down your throat, so, we oughta be mindful of, careful in what we say.
Absolutely. And ultimately, what this will inform is when we get to like the future land use, we want to, uh, base that in some of the data that we've gathered. And so, if we see, oh, we have some, what we're calling prime farmland, and we explain what we mean by that, it's like, oh, that's why the future land use on this is ag, and it gives us a defense if, uh, someone tries to, or inquires on doing something like, oh, I wanna put a subdivision up here. It's like, no, we want to meet our own goal that we have data backing us up. So, absolutely, we should be careful on how we phrase it, but ultimately, we're trying to feed that into, um, like the future land use and the policies that will carry us forward. Uh, the other one, uh, piece of information I realized was not on here, uh, 'cause it only, there's only two that I could find specifically, uh...
PA one sixteen.
Was PA one sixteen or like farmland preservation, I think it's now called, but there's, uh, individual property owners can put their land into like a farmland preservation program through the state. And I found one in the state's database, and I was looking through our files, and I found a second one I didn't find in the states, but Gallagher's Farm and then Edgecombe.
Would the assessor's office be a source for information or something like that?
Yeah, you can double-check with that, yeah.
Yeah, it's basically a tax credit program.
Yeah.
And you can roll, um, either for, uh, it's been a while since I, there's not a lot of PA one sixteens in, in this area of the state. Downstate, there's a, a lot. And there, uh, basically, it's a tax credit that you can either go for a ten-year period up to a hundred years.
I'm trying to remember, there used to be something, sounds like what you're talking about, that pertained to forest land. Is that the same? Is that also PA one sixteen or is that a different one?
No, PA one sixteen is strictly farmland. You're talking about the commercial forest.
So, that probably oughta be looked at too?
Yeah, we could look at those if there are any here.
No. Commercial forest.
Yeah, I'm not aware of any, but we can look at that. We can talk to the assessor about that. Yeah, they're basically, I know like PA one sixteen is basically offering a, the idea was that, um, it was intended to be for farms that are close to an area where there's development happening, urban areas, and to give them some relief was to give them some, uh, tax credit. So, if you enroll it for, let's say, ten years, you have to keep farming or, uh, not allow development for at least that ten-year period, and then you can renew it again.
Yeah, I remembered it was a previous planning commission discussion, we were looking at the future land use map that we have currently, and I think it was when we were discussing , uh, East Bay's, and, uh, someone had pointed out that like part of Hammond going into East Bay was indicated as ag, and like we were worried like what's kind of surrounding it, and that was still ag, but I think it's, that property, uh, might be in PA one sixteen. And so, I think that's, might be why it is designated on the future and probably should stay that way as ag.
Yeah, if it's the Edgecombe property, which I own land on both sides of Hammond there, that's probably most likely.
Yeah. I think that's what that is.
And that, quite honestly, is what the PA one sixteen program is all about. Working, when I was working down in Calamouz County, you'd go to the, the farming areas, and they were all, you know, there were townships that probably had easily more than fifty percent of their land was in PA one sixteen, but they were always out from town, but in the case of Edgecombe, to give them some relief, uh, you know, from taxes and so forth, that's where, uh, that, this program was really intended to do, uh, to... uh, that this program was really intended to do, uh, to allow farmers to keep operating. So, those were kind of the, I don't know if anybody had any comments or questions, or maybe are there some things that we're missing in terms of some of these objectives, or maybe the goals, whether it's the wording, or?
Commissioners, any other thoughts or ideas? One quick question, I really didn't have a chance to, to study this mail from the watershed center that came in tonight, but what are we thinking we might want to do in response to this? Uh, either, do they have some suggestions we want to incorporate, or are you thinking we'll be communicating back to them? Uh, no, and here's why not?
No, I, I think, I think what will, this, this will be information that we'll definitely want to add into some of our existing conditions, this will give us some added descriptions on some of the issues that are facing some of our water features within the township, so. No, I think this is really good.
Okay.
Information, I'll, um, I'll respond to Heather and, and, and I think my sense is they probably thought, saw this part on Natural Resources and, and thought that this was all that we were going to have in the master plan. And we have several pages, I mean, we have, uh, descriptions about the river and Silver Lake, and and we'll, we have some, uh, watershed maps and stuff like that, water feature maps. So, this will be information that we can use it to supplement that as well.
Good.
Uh, we'll also take a look at this too, and see if there's any need to tweak some of these objectives, or maybe add in some language, but I think this is, this is the type of feedback that, uh, proves to be really helpful when we're going through this process.
Yeah, I know we struggle to get public to provide us with input, we have meetings and nobody comes, so we're doing our best, but I, I know I for one appreciate when somebody like these folks communicate with us. Could you make sure that future replies by you to her or back and forth wind up in our packet, so we can all be keeping abreast of, of the communications?
Sure thing.
Thanks.
No, it is, it is helpful, I mean, we're, we're going through this, and we, we do our research and and data collection, and it's just nice for somebody to kind of say, well, have you thought about this? And it's, so it's always good to get that feedback.
Yeah, it may be something we don't want to do, but it's great to have somebody at least call our attention to it and make us think about it.
The other thing with the goals and objectives for this or any of the, uh, sections that we're going to have, we created a couple of years ago, and have been doing it annually, the, uh, implementation matrix, uh, which are based on the goals and objectives, and then putting some actions every year on, uh, what those are. So as we're forming it, uh, we can use that to kind of frame how we, uh, kind of decide what's a goal, what's an objective, what's more just sort of an ongoing, this is like a partnership that just needs to continue happening versus what's actually actionable, we want to track every year.
Sort of like a report card.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's good, it's always good to see those things.
Mm-hmm, but yeah, now that we're kind of forming it with that in mind, we can use that, and uh, there's always sort of, I remember in every community, they're like, what's a goal, what's an objective, what's an action item, and what lands on where, so.
And also just remember that the, these things are tied together, so the headings of these chapters are, are tied back to the Township Board Strategic Plan. So that's where we've kind of come up with some of these, uh, and so it's the Township Strategic Plan that the board put together, kind of gives out the overall direction. The master plan is one way that they're moving, uh, ahead on some of those things. The other one is in the Parks and Rec Master Plan, which will go on to the next, uh, one is the Parks and Trails Chapter, which is really pretty brief, because there's a lot of information that's in our contact, uh, in our, um, existing conditions report, but then we also have the actual Parks and Rec Master Plan, which gets into a lot more detail um, than the master plan will, but one of the things that we wanted to just really highlight here is a, is a pretty broad goal that talks about fostering a system of highly quali- high-quality active and passive parks. So we have active parks like Silver Lake, and then we have some, you know, really nice, uh, passive parks, you know, like Kids Creek and so forth. And then connecting them through trails, um, is kind of this broad goal. And, uh, the map that we, that Steve has up there, and it's on your desk, is, some of these are, uh, there, there's information on here, there's showing some existing sidewalks, and those are those orange ones that are kind of floating out there, those are based on developments, but then there's some of these that were, uh, are being developed, um, that have been developed, that connect some of the, uh, parks together, like you have the Buffalo Ridge Trail, which kind of goes, uh, starts over by like Historic Barnes, comes down over there by Great Wolf Lodge, and goes by Kids Creek, and connects over to, uh, the Y. So that's an example of how you can, you can walk from the Barnes, uh, Historic Barnes all the way down to the Y, you can stop at Kids Creek, you can go shopping at Coles all from that trail. Um, but that's, this is kind of illustrating the network, now this will, this is very rough draft right now. This is going to be developed in, for the master plan, while it's taking some of the parks stuff, which we included copies of that in your packets tonight, we're also updating the non-motorized plan. So that's the one that indicates, it's tied, that's tied directly to the zoning ordinance. The zoning ordinance says if you put a certain amount of investment into a property, you're required to put in uh, a sidewalk or bike path pursuant to the, uh, non-motorized plan. So for instance, when we did the beta project there at the corner of Hammond and Garfield, or Hammond and Lefranyer, along Hammond, the non-motorized plan calls for a ten-foot wide bike path. So that's what's going to go in along there. On Lefranyer, it's a six-foot wide, uh, concrete sidewalk, because there's a little bit different scale of the streets. Lefranyer's going to be more of a residential, although it's going to be mostly, um, multifamily residential, it's more of a, a multifamily scale where Hammond is, is more of a, a bike path type of situation, because it's a larger five-lane road, wider, uh, right-of-way, et cetera. So, this non-motorized plan is going to be the key, key piece to telling us what type of, uh, sidewalks or trails are required, and in some cases, it doesn't require them at all. Once we get out to the more rural areas in the township, there's usually, uh, no requirement, it's just kind of left natural. There might be some, uh, provision requiring for like, let's say, a bike lane or something in that, but, uh, this is an important part of the, uh, master plan, in, particularly in, uh, getting the, uh, the bikes, bike paths and the sidewalks done accordance to the zoning ordinance. So, for instance, another example is like, I'm just thinking the Meyer. That, the reason Meyer put in a, a ten-foot wide bike path is because that's what's in our non-motorized plan, is to have bike paths on both sides of thirty-one. Makes a lot of sense in that area for people either walking, but also biking to stores and shops and so forth.
All of the sidewalks over at Cherryland Center, uh, were part of, uh, were reviewed at Planning Commission. We kept citing that section, that the sidewalks are required, and that tied it back to that. And the other one, I knew what else I was going to say, at Staff Report, Kensington Park, that we kind of had a back and forth on the sidewalks, uh, drove down Woodward the other day, there are sidewalks in front of the existing units, and if we enforced our ordinance to do that.
Good for us.
So it, it's, it's ultimately leading to a system that we're building through this, so this is a, a real key piece. So this, uh, chapter is really important for us to understand that we're trying to establish these corridors, um, and providing access for, whether it's people that are just, uh, you know, in some cases, they're just out for a bike ride or, or whatever, or sometimes they're going to work. So it's, uh, it's an important part of the system, and to connect the parks themselves is something that's really interesting, when we're, the Commons Natural Area is focused on connecting to Hickory Hills and Hickory Meadows, um, that's a big effort, not just Garfield that support that, but a, a lot of these other groups are, like TART and so forth, are also supporting that as well.
In your report, you mentioned that the Parks and Trails Chapter is supplemented by the Township's Parks and Rec Master Plan. How are the two going to be melded together or cross-referenced, or the last thing we'd want is to have any potential inconsistencies in one versus the other. If somebody amends one, but the other one doesn't get amended, then they're inconsistent. We, we should try to avoid that if there's a way we can do it.
Yeah, that, so in the packet, if you look in, in your packet, there's, um, there're excerpts from the, the Parks and Rec Master Plan.
Yep.
And if you, uh, they're page numbered, but if you flip through, you'll find that there's a series, starts at sixty-seven, sixty-eight, sixty-nine, they're basically got images, uh, on top of them.
Yep, yep.
So those are areas in, those are ex, this, these are actually excerpts out of the Parks and Rec Master Plan that talks about how to can make connections to parks and other trails. So those are very specific, and those are things that the, the Parks and Rec Commission will be working on and seeing if, if there are ways that they can improve those. Taken those and we've, this map here, uh, which is ultimately going to be our non-motorized plan in the, uh, in the master plan, also references those. So it's, it's, they're looking at it more from the, uh, you know, how do we get access, get people to parks, or between parks? We're looking at that as being a part of not just getting access to parks, but how does it fit into having sidewalks along South Airport Road or along thirty-one? Uh, and, you know, how do we getting, uh, you know, Oakleaf or Meadow Valley, the, the development going out there across from uh, Traverse City West High School, they put in that, that bike path, how do we get connections from there, ultimately, we want to get down to, uh, the middle school, and so this is what this plan does. So this is, the, the Parks and Rec is a little bit more pointed, kind of focusing on the parks themselves. Uh, this one that's going to be going into the master plan, and, and this is more or less an update from the current one, there's already one in the master plan already, is really a broader, uh, with that, we'll probably touch on that a little bit more next month when we get into, uh, to more details on transportation. I think overall, the, the, the master plan is probably looking at a broader scope where the Parks and Rec Master Plan is very pointed. It's, you know, focused on parks.
Yeah, and we can reference it, uh, although we do, the Parks and Rec Plan is adopted, uh, and I think in some fashion, we can just link those, and should link them, that the master plan referenced, that the Parks and Rec Plan is adopted, that it's all part of the township policy and planning documents.
Just a question, um, so these proposed trails, are they taken from the TART trail? Proposed trails, or is this something that we're doing separately, or what, where is it?
These were, uh, things that Parks and Rec Commission discussed as for putting in here, because the Parks and Rec Plan, um, the kind of main purpose is to go after grants, so if you have like ideas for projects, uh, like we linked the whole Commons Design Plan as part of it, so when we start pulling projects out of there, we have it referenced in a plan. Some of these are, um, uh, they were mostly focused on how to get people to the parks, or connect the parks to each other. Um, or connect a different, uh, like a trail to a park. Was mostly focused on that, and that's why, like John was saying, the non-motorized plan will be broader. Uh, it does not, uh, specifically prioritize like any one of these over the others. Um, and some of them are more acknowledging that they're out there, like the one between, uh, the Commons and Hickory Hills and Hickory Meadows. TART is kind of taking the lead on that, and we're sort of acknowledging that is going to be an asset connecting to parks, one of which we own and operate, the other that's in the township, and it'll serve not only the region, but township residents, but yeah, TART's really taken the lead on that specifically. Um, and some of these, um, were also to, uh, like some of them between parks were more highlighted as, oh, could these be pulled out as potential parks project if desired down the road. Some of them though, and I want to highlight one, uh, we listed in here as Mall Trail to Silver Lake Rec Area. And again, yeah, sorry for the lack of road labels on here, uh, I was like, I want a clean map, and, and my bias is I'm used to looking at this map so often, I know exactly what all the roads are.
Maybe pull up an aerial.
Yeah, I could, uh, pull up an aerial, um.
Might be easier to show.
But those, the majority of the ones that you have there are ones that Parks and Rec thought it'd be a good idea to come down through here, but it's really not a.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
Not being in tandem.
Right, yeah, none of the, they were all listed as like, these are good potential assets to trails and non-motorized, and to our Parks and Trails system, but didn't necessarily mandate or scope out. Township is definitely going to do this one, some of them, uh, may be guided by future development. Um, like some of the trails have been built that way. Uh, I think Mall Trail to Miller Creek, uh, was one of those, uh, that could be, uh, fueled by development, a couple of them were cited by the MSA student group, so those are sort of incorporated into the plan as well. Um, this one, I'm going to turn on the aerial.
So will we be sharing this with TART? And maybe they'll be incorporating it into their plan?
Potentially, yeah, and they.
Hate to see fifteen plans.
Correct, yeah.
Well, we, we work with them a lot on, on this, and we want, you know, we're kind of basically working from the same plan. One of the things we did want to make sure is that we had, uh, the, when it comes down to priorities, you know, we didn't, we wanted to make sure that, you know, they heard what some of the township priorities are, because I think it, you know, they're looking at a much larger system, and what they might think is a priority might not really be that important to us as a township. So we're trying to, uh, make sure that, why this is all listed, when it comes out, out to what our priorities, that we are both on the same page.
Yep. And then they can happen in different ways, like this one in particular, uh, this is the aerial, but corresponding to what's like on both the Future Land Ma- Land Use Map that we have now and the zoning, this is that big property behind Sam's Club that is, uh, currently zoned as R1, and I think the sign is out there, it's, uh, we haven't ever received an application on it, we've seen kind of periodic, uh, inquiries on it, but if we were ever to get, uh, interested, uh, future developers, given that the current zoning is R1, um, there would need to be access, uh, both for vehicles, and it would be important to have non-motorized access down to the existing Mall Trails is on thirty-one, and it would be a, a sort of advantageous, uh, and would just make a lot of sense to connect, kind of have a key connection between, like down to Silver Lake Rec Area between that. Now that is just one piece of it, but being that it's future development, uh, it's sort of is kind of a key cog, and sort of reminiscent of uh, the last time there was a key cog, uh, in a future trail system, and that was, uh, Oakleaf, now known as Meadow Valley. Uh, if you recall, when we reviewed their PUD, uh, we had them, uh, put in a trail because it was on our non-motorized plan, uh, not even along the road, it actually showed it going through that property. Um, and they did, and it's actually now in place. Now, it's a little bit floating, it does connect to the sidewalk that's, uh, on this part of Long Lake in front of the, uh, Montessori School, and, oh, even you can, started putting in the sidewalk as of this aerial. But it does sort of connect that next piece of the puzzle, and as future things are built out, and that's kind of what John was saying, is like we're building out a future system, what are those key important pieces? There's going to be different ones than just the Parks and Rec, I was focused on just Parks and Rec parts of it, so what other ones should be included in a full-blown, non-motorized plan? And that's what we'll be looking at, uh, next time, but this is sort of that piece of the puzzle.
And just to review those, uh, objectives that we have under the Parks and Trails goal, we have fund and operate, and fund, operate, and maintain parks in a way that gives people the amenities they need in a safe and clean park environment, and that encourages a healthy lifestyle, so it's just kind of a, a basis for the parks. Establish corridors of undeveloped land preserved for recreational use or environmental protection. So it's just kind of a basis for the parks, establish corridors of undeveloped land preserved for recreational use or environmental protection. Improve accessibility to parks by building a connected system, including trails, bike paths, sidewalks, roadways and transit. We kind of covered that. Continue to update natural resource inventories and maps to provide context and development reviews, zoning policy considerations and planning efforts. So these types of maps that we have, we've just kind of been going through are really helpful for that. Just advising to regularly update the Parks and Rec Master Plan, which we will continue to do. Update and maintain a non-motorized transportation plan, which is what this plan sheet is talking about. And then actually the zoning requirements to go with it. Right now, our zoning requirement is if you put in more, if it's twenty thousand dollars or more of an investment on your property and there's not a sidewalk out there, you might have to put a sidewalk in if it's based on our plan. So those are, that's language we feel we need to adjust a little bit. And then support conversion of rail lines to non-motorized trails. So there's a great opportunity for some of our rail line, particularly the part that goes, that's on the part that goes along Cass as it kind of goes out towards Chump's Corner. Once you kind of get to that lower part, there's, you know, there's no train traffic out there, there's no trains going out to cherry growers anymore. So would be a good opportunity to convert that to trails and connect out to other communities and other destinations. So just want to put that in there, doesn't mean it's going to happen, but it gives, again, that's something that we would, you know, the township would be supportive of, you know, if it works out well, so. That's about it on the Parks and Trails.
Any thoughts or comments to what you're hearing? Sounds like you're on the right track. So that's it for that particular report then. Yes?
Yeah.
Going to go on to the last one then, the Community Engagement and Outreach Report, Planning Department twenty-two-three dash forty-six.
So one of the things that happened last year was that we did, the Town Board did a community survey that was, I think, really beneficial to have that information and perspective on residents within Garfield and what their priorities are and what's important and how they want to see the future of the township. One of the things that we've been kicking around is the idea, we thought at one point to maybe having a large visioning session. It's kind of hard to draw people in to something like that. So we thought one of the things that a lot of communities do is they go out to people and they talk to them about different ideas. And one format that we talked about is doing some pop-up events or pop-up, what we call pop-up style events. So these are where we actually go to locations like, let's say, Silver Lake Park. You know, the Dog Park is very active out there and we kind of basically set up a booth or whatever and just be there for maybe a few hours on a Saturday or something like that and just talk with people and say, you know, these are some concepts that we're thinking about the future of Garfield, what do you think? Do you have other ideas? It gives an opportunity to kind of go where the people are. Now granted, they might not all be Garfield residents, but there'll probably most likely be some out there that we could talk to. And it's an opportunity where we could present ideas to them and see what their feedback is. It's not, it certainly isn't scientific, it's more of a conversation, but it's also important to bring about awareness that the township is doing a master plan, that the township is working on the future of the community. And just some of that visibility is really important. I think the survey itself is probably our best way to really gauge true accuracy of what the residents are. But this is another way of, you know, getting exposure, getting people to know about Garfield Township and what might be some of the things that we're working on. So we just kind of wanted, I know we brought this up before, but if it is something we want to pursue, we thought it would be important to start thinking about it now as we're getting into the summer months. We thought a couple of locations in addition to like the Dog Park might be at Meyer, Oriana West, Lucky Jacks, we thought the Boardman River Nature Center, if there's some type of event or something that we could be maybe a party to that. And again, it's just a matter of setting up like a booth or something. One of the things we thought about too is that, I know a lot of people are not really comfortable with maps, so they might not even know where Garfield is at on a map. So one of the things we found when we did the Barlow Garfield Neighborhood Plan, one of the things we did is a visual preference survey for people. We said, what do you think of these building types? And so they were able to vote on that. The bottom line is what we found out is that they're okay with density, they just want it to look good. It has to be quality, you know, you can, they're okay with taller buildings, but it better be attractive or they're not something that they're going to be supportive of. One of the things, for example, that we could say is like, what if we show an accessory dwelling unit? Or like a granny flat of some sort? Say, this is what we call an ADU, accessory dwelling unit, what do you think about that? And I'll use that as an example, but instead of just talking about it to say maybe we'd have some photos or images, you know, we're thinking about, you know, some improvement within the township or changing something. We can, instead of just talking about it, maybe showing those images and getting some, just getting response from people. Now, that type of situation, there's, you're not going to end up probably, you could probably be there for a couple of hours and really not talk to a lot of people in that time, maybe it's busy even, you know, maybe thirty, forty people. But it does give a certain amount of visibility, something we could advertise in our, on our website and in our newsletter. And again, just letting people know about this plan, so when we get down to the public hearing and ultimately adoption of the master plan, we know we've kind of done our efforts to reach out to people. Also an opportunity, if people want to be engaged and learn about the master plan is, you know, they could send, you know, provide us with their email and we can, you know, when the plan gets drafted or they can come to our meetings or whatever, we can provide that to them as well.
When we did those, or when the staff did those Barlow Garfield sessions and you showed the pictures, I'm trying to remember where were those held, those sessions?
We did those at the County Health Building on Lefrainer. Wasn't the ideal location, but we were looking for some interior space because that was, we had projectors and stuff like that. Unfortunately, there isn't really any good public building right near Cherryland Center, so we ended up going there.
We were trying to get as close to the neighborhood and that as possible and that was about as close we could get.
Well, it seemed like you got good feedback and good data from that. The trick is to get it from our residents. That's what concerns me a little bit about going to these other places, they're all major draws, but I suspect that far more than fifty percent of the people, you're going to get it, almost every one of them, they're not Garfield Township residents. And so how much input do we want from those people about the Garfield Township Master Plan?
Well, we can, we can ask them if they're a resident or not and I think one of the things to to understand is they also are visitors, they may not live here, but they, they travel into our community. Others, I mean, obviously this is a major shopping area for their whole region, so I imagine we could run into people from all over the place. I think we would try to say, you know, if they are a resident, maybe talk with them a little bit, you know, pay a little bit more attention to them. The other thing too is this isn't going to be anything that's going to give us a lot of, it's not the same input as like the community survey. It's more or less a visibility thing. It does give us some opportunity to get some feedback. So we could, we could look at some other ideas as well.
Well, I applaud the idea and I guess the first couple of bullet points you got is like, what type of feedback should be sought and what types of input events should we organize? Do we need to create that wheel or are there, there's other municipalities that must have been ahead of us in the planning process? And what have they been doing for pop-up events?
Yeah.
And maybe that would give us some either good ideas or now we tried this, it didn't work and it will save us going down a rabbit hole.
Yeah, I talked with Sean Winter, because the city has done quite a bit of those, they're going through their master plan process right now. And I got a few tips from them. They did get a lot of people that wanted to sign up, they got a lot, I think they got over a thousand email addresses, people interested. He did say, one of the things that's really important is your identity to let people know you're with Garfield Township or in their case it was the city, but they, because I think that's probably the most important thing. So I could imagine if we did something like, like a pop-up, we'd probably get T-shirts that says Garfield Township on it or something like that. And I think it's, it is important for them to kind of understand, you know, maybe what some of the issues are and sometimes I think people appreciate the opportunity to be heard. And that's what we're doing, is we're giving them another option to be heard. It's not like they're asking us to solve an issue at that point, but sometimes they're just, they want to say, hey, this has been on my mind and gives them an outlet to say that to us, so.
I think we need to get a little more organized with it. These are, this is a specific topic. You know, the granny flats or, okay, so let's talk about that, maybe we got some pictures, maybe we've got some other things that can spur people, their imagination on things, rather than just, oh, hi, I'm Molly Agostinelli, tell me what you think. You know, what are the other topics? Do we want to place a lot of emphasis on these trails? Do we want to place a lot of emphasis on water properties or, you know, what, what? Try to have some specific, okay, we got this topic, we got that topic, we got this topic.
That sounds like a good suggestion, probably also have some open-ended stuff at the end, like what else would you like to tell us about that we haven't asked you about?
Yeah.
Yeah, like the visual preference survey, we showed them a picture, so they reacted to it. And that's what, I totally agree what you're saying, it's like if we suggest something and we're just saying, what do you think? You know, otherwise, people will go in all different directions and it's not what we're trying to do, we just
Well, if we talk about the granny flats, people, a lot of people don't know what that is.
Right.
You know, okay, well, it could look like this or it could look like that or it could be something else. Mainly what it is is higher density on a lot.
Right.
That we're going to allow.
And what people think of something like that might depend on some other things, like can you have short-term rentals in that granny flat? If the answer is no, there may be a little less opposition than somebody is afraid that's what's going to happen to it.
Right, and it's a good way to educate.
Speaking of educating, I've always found the newsletter that comes in with the tax bills to be extremely effective, but I'm sure you've shared it with us, I can't quote, though, what percentage of our residents are property owners that receive a newsletter as part of a tax bill versus the people that are living in all our apartment complexes? They're not taxpayers directly, so they're not getting the newsletter. Is there a way to send the newsletter to even non-property owners?
Well, when we did the community survey, that was a random sample of voter registration. So that would, that would, if you were a registered voter in the township, you may be an apartment person or you might be, you know, a homeowner, it didn't matter. So we took a, what did we do, seven, eight hundred people that we
We did, I think it was six hundred and each of the seven precincts, I remember like forty-two hundred.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But our response was somewhere around seven, eight hundred.
Oh, oh, you're talking about the response, yeah, the response was, yeah, about that.
Right, but that was, that was voters, registered voters.
Well, that might be a good way, I don't want to spend township money, that's not my place, but it's, I'm a property owner, I get the newsletter. But if I'm only a minority of the township residents and we represent everybody, then we ought to be providing information to the other residents that aren't property owners and getting their feedback. That's what we struggle the most with is getting feedback. I like the idea of these pop-up things, but I, as I mentioned, I'm concerned that a lot of the people aren't going to be our residents. Nice if our residents saw this newsletter, at least a lot of them. And maybe if we can't send it to everybody, if we could send it on some kind of a random based on voter registrations per voting precinct, that's a good way to get it out to a lot of people that might not otherwise get it. And you can do a lot of publicizing in the newsletter, like we're going to have these sessions and blah, blah, blah and solicit input. And if we don't get any input, at least we tried.
Well, if you're looking for the renters, you might need to do something at forty-five or you might need to do something at another, they have a specific for that.
Yeah, really good idea.
Maybe at their community center.
But you know, maybe we hit the senior population and some of the, not necessarily assisted living, but maybe, but at least the senior housing, we have a lot of that, so maybe we need to go there.
Yeah, actually, that's a
That's a really good idea.
That's a really good idea, I'm thinking just, you know, we're dealing with Ridge Forty-five and South Twenty-two, I'm thinking they got a nice community center there and there's four hundred apartments right there.
Hundreds of people right there, yeah, that might be a great idea.
So, yeah, we could have, you know, set up right by their community center there and yeah, I think they would probably work with us too on something like that, but in the same thing with the senior housing as well.
And we can separate who's renters and who's landowners.
And I know a couple of times when we've had to do the three-hundred-foot notices, if it reaches into apartment complexes, they have to post it and we've managed even like emails to the property managers, even just kind of adding that as a distribution, like these are happening, can you distribute or post this in your lobby and, or distribute it to the residents as well?
Yeah, that might, I know there's, it's just the larger apartment complexes that have the property managers, but maybe having, you know, presenting that newsletter to them, they could also take some of that information and share that with the residents. A lot of them do that through an email newsletter or something like that, might be helpful as well. It's another way of getting it out there. I think probably our most important thing here to think of is what are the questions we want to ask or the topics that we want to present and get feedback on, and I think that's something that we can take a look at, but.
Could that be a topic of a discussion, maybe you guys come up with some suggestions and float it by us and then we chime in with, yeah, we like that or what about this, what about that?
Yep.
Yeah, I think
That might help.
I think by the next study session, it'll be May, and then if the newsletter goes out in July, we're like preparing it in June. So if anything needs to go to the board, I think this can be like a major topic of discussion at the next study session. I think we got some direction with like, we definitely want to keep it, we want to have specific topics, but have some open-ended. But even in advertising, like people may not know what a master plan is. Oh, we're influencing things in terms of like housing and trails and future development of the township. This is what we're looking for input on. Use things like photos and images, because like maps with lots of detail, I may absolutely love that. Average person is not going to understand and not going to be able to give us adequate feedback on that.
Well, there's a lot of topics that are going to be covered in a master plan.
Right.
I would think soliciting public input, stuff like housing and transportation are probably the, probably the major ones that John Q. Public is going to be more interested in than some of the others.
You know, I don't think, did we ask about the bridge in the community survey? I don't know if we ever
I don't know if we did.
Probably didn't because we probably thought that's not necessarily our
It's also not our project.
Our project, but you know, that's, that would be an interesting
It'll affect us a lot.
Yeah, and that actually would be, everybody's going to have an opinion on that.
Didn't the Road Commission already have those kinds of charrettes and?
Yeah, but I guess what I would be, look, one of the things that, it's not so much the bridge, but maybe I'm thinking of the corridor itself and what do they think about? Because I think that's been, this kind of fear is that Hartman-Hammond is going to be the next South Airport. It's going to be sprawl, there's going to be commercial, there's driveways everywhere, it's going to and I think that's one of our challenges is going to be, and I think so far the township has done an excellent job on that is to, for instance, like the Hartman, the Hammond Corridor, you know, no commercial along there, very little, some service commercial there, but you know, mostly it's, it's not big drivers of a lot, generating a lot of traffic. And as that bridge comes online, both Hartman and Hammond will be important corridors to ensure that the land use does not, you know, overtax that important corridor. So we might have some thoughts on, not specifically the bridge itself, but that corridor.
That might be a good topic.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But you mentioned, Molly, the ADUs and, and there may be all kinds of other things that we're thinking about in, in relation to housing that could be topics of some of these little pop-ups and with your pictures and what do you think of this, that and the other thing? As you say, you were surprised the last time that there wasn't so much opposition to density when they saw what it looked like. So some of the things that we're thinking might be controversial, maybe they will, but maybe some of them won't be if you showed some pictures of successful ones.
Well, it might be good to get an idea. You know, we have agriculture land, but if I'm developing a subdivision, I would be bringing it in and I could have some densities and I could have some other things. How people feel about having higher densities in these areas, you know? How would you feel about that? We're going to have that. You know, I mean, these people who own large tracts of ag, you don't want the public saying, I don't want any housing there, I want that left open. Well, we can't do that, so how do we educate them about that? You know, we intend to leave some parks and other things that are going to be open space, but we're also not going to infringe on, on people's right to sell their property, you know? That, that kind of, I don't know how we touch on that, but get an idea on that.
Right, like in the, like if, on just ag zoning, right, like currently, like if you did housing or did a subdivision, it'd be like one acre lot, so it'd be a large lot, which is about as like open as you can get housing development on there. But like if there's targeted areas or like, what if you felt, or what if you saw this higher density? Maybe it only makes sense in certain areas of the township, but we can ask people as we're talking to them, like what neighborhood are you in or what area are you in? Does it make sense in the neighborhood you live in or does it make sense somewhere else that might provide some housing?
His neighborhood, yeah.
In that neighborhood. Which.
You know, the answer.
They will say yes.
Well, I said, I don't want to direct it to a specific thing. I really want an idea of what they're thinking about that and educating them on the reality that things are going to change and they always change, so.
Right, right. And it's how do you direct that and how, what policy should be in place to direct that?
Yeah.
Is that notable maybe for the next study session that you guys give some thought to?
Yeah.
X number of ideas that you're thinking of could be at pop-ups and if it's in our packet, then we can give some thought for a few days before we come in about whether we think of something else that we might want to suggest and brainstorm all that. Good.
I think that's good and the timeline would work well, because then in June, if we've either forwarded something to the board or are preparing the newsletter, we can prepare, this is where they're going to be and what is going to happen at each of them and start doing the like outreach strategy for it.
Well, and you have to get permission. If you're going to Myers, you got to set that up or you're going to a nursing home, you got to set that up.
So if we're going to do any of these, like start reaching out to those, like we're thinking about doing something in roughly this time period, what would you think of us or what would it take to do that if we were going to consider that and bring that information back?
One thing, John, I'm wondering, some ancillary items, made pens, pencils, thanking the people that participate.
Are you going to record what they say?
Yeah, it's a good question.
You know, obviously maybe have, you know, cookies, donuts, things like that also to, to share with the people and entice them to come over.
Good thought on how do you, how do you document the input?
You don't want all these thousands of sticky notes, do you?
Yeah.
Well, that's, that's actually.
That's actually not the bad way to gather it.
Yeah, I mean, actually I was thinking maybe if we had like a poster that has the images on there that they could just write on that.
Somebody's then got to do a lot of correlation of all that, but if you can do it.
We, we've done that before.
It's happened at the Commons Design Plan.
As long as they can write legibly somewhat. We can usually decipher it, but no, I, that's actually not, you know, we've done a lot of projects and planning efforts like that and reengage people and writing it down some, just even if it's just a few words, you can usually get a, a gist of what they're talking about.
You know, and you want it about a five-minute discussion.
Right.
You don't want a two-hour discussion.
No, right.
A couple of things.
Right.
You can engage somebody for a few minutes, but they're going to be doing other things, you know, they're not just coming to see me, they're.
Right. Yeah, that's part of the. Beauty of it is you know that, okay, they're not there just for you, they're there for something else and you just happen to be there.
And like even at the open houses for the Commons Design Plan, it helped when like if you're in like a deeper conversation with someone, if there's all kinds of people around, if there's like five people at one booth, you're talking to like one or a group of people, but someone can be writing down something and sticking it up there as they think of something or just sort of capturing that on the fly. Yeah, I think, and follow up with like the Ridge Forty-five and some of these others, I think it was a really good idea to have one in some of those places.
Other thoughts or comments or things we want to talk about on this one? Or you want to elicit from us on this one?
I think we're good. I think we, this is some good feedback, we appreciate it.
Okay, good, good. So I guess there's really nothing more we need to talk about. It sounds like on ED twenty twenty-three dash forty-six. Next up is public comment and we still have no public, so we'll proceed beyond that. Next is other business, nothing listed there for tonight. And then items for the next agenda, it looks like you're going to keep us pretty busy in a couple of weeks.
Yeah, a few of these you've seen, one's a public hearing scheduled for the Olson PUD, a few findings, effects of things that have been around.
Yep.
At the past few meetings. The new ones are Burmley Meadows Site Condo. This is, you looked at, Steve Zakrzewski, the applicant called Burmley Hills, was that southern portion of that sort of like three segmented subdivision where the middle was that old sub and he was doing the southern part. He's coming back to do the northern part of it to kind of complete that, that three segments. Ridge Forty-five, phase one to three, and then South Twenty-two is now known as Ridge Forty-five, phase four. So this is the thing to link them together. Both of those will be on intro and you, you've been in contact with Scott and the applicant, right?
Yeah, so I'm just on that, we're, right now they are two separate applications that we're working together. We, we're still waiting to hear back from legal counsel, township legal counsel on that if there's ability to merge those into one special use permit, so.
So you expect you will have heard back from counsel before our meeting on May tenth?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then the other one is Nicola Bank. So this was last fall, the landscaping that was taken out. We've had some communications with, it's actually the landscaper that is working on that project. We put it on here, although they have yet to actually submit a formal application. They sent us more the sort of sketch-up of the landscaping they proposed and we gave it back to them. We cited more of the landscaping ordinance, they were still a little bit short, but we haven't, haven't heard back from since then and we haven't had a formal application, so it's one that we don't normally want someone to submit this close to the meeting, although this is one we've already been in contact with and we're expecting and like kind of having them go through this process. But if they're not, if they don't have one, we have nothing to process yet, so that may not, may or may not make it.
Okay.
We'd like it to make it so they can plant and get the landscaping back.
They know they need it.
They know they need to do it, yeah. And they've been informed they need to do a full application with application fee, so we're waiting for them to do it.
I have just an off the, off the subject question. On the Olson PUD, I was looking at the Prince, it's not really a planning commission thing, but how are they going to have bedrooms with no egress?
I thought of the same thing.
Yeah.
Is it sprinkler systems? Do they get, is there?
You still don't.
I don't know, I, that's why I was, I asked that when we left that day, if, what was going on there?
They got three bedrooms and no windows on any of them. So how do you, and you have to have two means of egress for a bedroom in order to call it a bedroom. Do you need to get out a window? You need to get out a door. And there's no, no windows.
Maybe he's going to add some.
Well, it's their interior.
It's all interior.
Unless they got skylights putting in or something, I don't know that, but they're, they had an architect do it, it's, wasn't it great?
Yeah, I would assume that they would.
But they have to go through Carl, he won't pass it.
Yeah, building, they'll catch all that stuff there, so.
I just thought, gee, how much do you spend on that?
We can ask Carl too, is this seen anywhere else or is this up to code?
Just take a quick look at that before the next meeting.
Well, there's a code, construction code.
Right, does this meet code or not?
Code is what you need and you got to have egress out of a bedroom.
All right. Anything else for the good of the order tonight?
I think I'll be absent at our next meeting.
Everybody else expect to be here on May ten if we can, good.
Make a motion we adjourn.
All right, we're adjourned.